Mayor He.
President.
Commissioner Hell.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Schreer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gou.
Present.
All commission members present.
I will now turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing we've got to talk about tonight is non-union employee compensation and also then the idea of bridging down those employees who are still in the defined benefit program. We've got, who are at a 2.25 multiplier. As you know, all of our collective bargaining units have been bridged down at this point. And so we have a group of non-union people who still need to be addressed. Before I get to that particular issue, I want to go through a presentation that Will and Heather worked on with some participation from me. On where we're at in terms of non-union employee compensation right now. Michelle, can we have the PowerPoint? Next slide, please. This slide describes the approach that the MML wage study took, formed around 2005. Went into effect in 2006, 2007 range. I'm not going to read all these slides. Better than I can read to you, but I will comment on each one of them. So wages for this group have not been adjusted to address mark changes in the marketplace since this study was done in the 2006, 2007 range as it relates to our non-union employees. We have done that for pretty much all the various collective bargaining units as part of our negotiations with them. But not this group. COLA adjustments have occasionally been made, as you'll see in a later slide that we'll go over, but nothing to address our position vis-à-vis other employers in the marketplace. Next slide, Michelle. This is just the methodology that was used back then to score each position. So MML, when they looked at all of our positions, use these factors both to evaluate where they should be in terms of market and then also to ensure internal equity amongst various positions. So each job pays what it's worth vis-à-vis every other job at the city. This is also the scoring criteria that compensation committee uses when they either grade new positions that we create or consider changes in the duties of others who responsibilities have expanded. Next, next slide, Michelle. These are the city's non-union employees. They're basically all either supervisory, almost all supervisory in some fashion. The only two exceptions to that really are building official and the planning associate who previously had supervisory responsibility. It's worth noting that 12 of the 34 employees in this group are utilities department employees. In other words, those that paid from the enterprise. Next slide, Michelle. So this slide shows the non-union salary schedule as it was in effect July 1st, 2008, which was the first full year after the study was completed. This slide shows the percent wage increases between that scale that you just saw from 2008 and 2021 for non-union personnel. The thing to note about this are the zeros in many of the years, in fact, six out of the eight years, non-union staff received a 0% increase. So this is what would have been what I referred to as a COLA increase, not a market adjustment. So most part during many of these years, staff, non-union staff didn't get any increase. Cost of living there. Next slide, Michelle. Okay. This slide shows the current salary schedule for non-union personnel as it is in effect today. One thing to note about this that you'll see in contrast to some of the other bargaining unit schedules is that it's a seven-step schedule. If some of the other schedules you see that they achieve their maximum pay in a much shorter period of time. Next slide. So this slide explains the approach we took in comparing our non-union salaries with those of other communities, which is what I'm about to share with you. Many of those communities did not report a range of salaries, only a current salary. So in most cases, where that's true, you'll see that it's highlighted in yellow. And on the upcoming comparison slides, you'll see that city's position on each slide is highlighted in green. It's the case that the city of Adrian has lost people directly to some of these comparisons. Next slide, Michelle. This is the position of building official. Like I said, these next few slides compare selected positions with comparable communities. These are sorted by maximum pay or when maximum pay or range was not available then. As I said, we use current salary as the max for sorting purposes. So all those yellow salaries that you see there, those communities did not have a range that they reported. So we just use the current salary as the map, sort it that way. Obviously, the green is our building official. So our building official is salary ranks 29th out of the 39 reporting communities. Next slide. It's the position of clerk. See that the clerk's position ranks 54th out of 72 reported. Next slide. Police chief. Police chief came in 32nd out of 49. Next slide. Fire chief. Fire chief came in 42nd out of 55. Next slide. Finance director. Finance director was 25th out of 42.
Actually, it's 27th, sorry.
Well, that's your fault.
That's my, 27 out of 42. Sorry.
Next slide, Michelle. Assistant finance director. 15.27. Next slide. Char director. 31 out of 45. Next slide. Arts and rec director. 25th out of 38. Next slide. Treasure. Treasure came in 25th out of 39. Next slide. This is wastewater plant superintendent. So we found 21 reporting communities. Ours was 13th. Next slide. Water plant superintendent. We used a little smaller population here because it was hard to find comparables. Ours was 11th out of 19. Next slide. Water sewer plant superintendent. 15th out of 19. Final comparison slide, just in case you were wondering. I came in 50th out of 60.
You asked me to remove that, but I kept it in there.
Next slide, Michelle. So we use the internal union groups, particularly PPOAM, because PPOAM employees are mostly supervised by people who are in the group that we're talking about. For our internal comparisons. Next slide. This slide shows the PPOAM wage increases from 1997 to 2007. Note on here, the 3% plus was the norm during these years. Two years out of 13 was a percentage increase, under 3%. Next slide. This was the PPOAM wage table on July 1st, 2008. Same point where we started with the non-union group. There were nine classifications at that point, divided into eight different wage groups. It's two of the classifications, same wage group. Importantly, max wage was achieved after three years of the job. Next slide. Starting in 2008, adjustments were made to make the city more competitive, both in recruiting and retention for this group. All these changes resulted in pay increases that were outside of the COLA increases given in those years. This is just summarizing some of those changes that were made. And next slide. This is PPOAM's current wage table. We now have eight classifications of the six wage groups. And they max out to pay of two years. Next slide. So this group and other groups reach their maximum in just a few years versus seven, as it's up for our non-union employees. This is compared to the 15.5 increase in wages for non-union personnel over the same period of time. You can see that this bargaining unit got a 26% increase during that period of time. Next slide, Michelle. And so then this compares some of the other bargaining minutes as well. See that they achieved anywhere from 23.5% to 32.8% increases over the same period of time. Next slide. This slide kind of summarizes what I just said. Goes in between the union bargaining groups and the non-union group in terms of what's happened with wages over the period 2008, 2021. Next slide. So these are just a few examples, and I'll let you read through these of the gap that's narrowing between supervisors and their supervised employees. As a result, we have some evidence that the incentive to advance or be promoted from the supervised positions into the supervisory positions is being minimized. You want to share your example that you have of that, Will?
I've got, obviously several examples really over the years. I had an example of a I had an opening for a crew leader and I had an individual stepped up and did that job for a couple of years. But it just got to the point where the stress of this extra duty wasn't worth the money for him. So he ended up stepping back down. And then now, you know, it's just hard to attract anybody. I interviewed somebody last year who I thought, you know, he checked every single box. And I had him scheduled to start and he took a job elsewhere, you know, with more money. But it's just, it's just that, you know, you're starting to narrow that gap. And it's just not, people aren't wanting to step up and take, get that promotion to do that extra work.
Next slide, Michelle. This just takes a look at where the salary would have been had annual wage increases in the various categories there, 1.5% to 3.5% been given as opposed to transpired. Next slide, Michelle. So this slide illustrates the percentage difference in the maximum wages between 2008 and 2021 with the given percentage increases. For example, wages are 12.1% below what they would have been if the non-union group had been given a 2% annual wage increase since 2008. Or they are 27.4% below what they would have been, 3% annual wage increase since 2008. 3% was the average that was given to PPOAM. Now that MERS uses 3% in their actuarial assumptions for their purposes. Next slide, Michelle. But I'm going to talk a little bit about the concept of bridge down before I get to summing up. Note that only 14 of the 34 non-union employees are in a bridge down category, which means they have a 2.25% multiplier for the defined benefit plan right now. Eight of those being the utilities department again. That's the significance of that. Still, it's a very significant, a very significant improvement in the funded percentage, as you can see, for this group can be achieved through just bridging down these 14 employees. You can see that the funded percentage for that group goes up just by doing that from 59.3%, where it is currently 61.2%. Next slide, Michelle. So this, these are recommendations. The general idea is to increase wages to better reflect the market and to be able to recruit and retain employees. Most effective way to address the pension funding issues that we're all aware of is by reducing that benefit. So my proposal is for a one-time payout that would come from the additional lump-sum payment to MERS that we typically make annually. So typically, we make a half million dollar additional contribution over a required contribution to MERS. You'll recall that last year that resulted in no change in our funded percentage. So rather than make that full contribution this year, my proposal would be for those 14 employees that we're going to bridge down, that we give them 10% of current salary payout out of that amount. See on the slide there how that breaks down amongst the various funds for the city. The great majority of that comes from funds that are funded other than by tax revenues. Not most of it does not, would not come from general fund, unlike that contribution, which comes entirely from the general fund. The one-time payout payout to employees is significantly less than lump-sum payments we've made to MERS in the past. But the bridge down has a much larger effect on unfunded liability. And obviously, the other part of this is then to do something for all the non-union employees about market conditions. What we've gone through in the study indicates that really we're about 10% behind where we should be for that group. And we would propose making a 5% increase once we get to a point of approval. Obviously, that would be a small period of time during the fiscal year, mostly in fact, the next fiscal year. And then still do our 2% COLA that we've been planning to do this year. And then when we get to 2023, we look into another market correction, the other half of the market correction that would be in the queue in that year. The other thing that I failed to mention about the bridge down is we're also going to require those employees who are in the, all the employees who are still in the defined benefit program begin contributing an additional 2% of their end of the plan. That'll again boost that 2%. So the last slide just says questions, so I'll just leave it at this slide.
Have all the non-union employees been okay with proposed changes potentially? Or, I mean, from a staff level, like, you know, because bridge down was a tough pill to swallow, but obviously, like, our other units, you know, you gotta, you gotta raise the wage to make up for that, you know, for that pit on your pension. So, I mean, so are they all okay with it? I mean, because...
Everybody I've talked to, and you guys probably talked to more folks even than I have, felt like this is fair. I mean, obviously, nobody wants to give up any part of their effort.
Right.
They've understood as they've seen the other bargaining units do the same thing that was coming. It's not a surprise to anybody.
Yeah. Because I look at that, I mean, because every, we all have to do in the private sector. I mean, you know, we're competing for people. I go to restaurants, I look at good, good customers, you know, I always say, hey, you like them here, you're happy. You know, so I get it, you know, it's one of those things where we did it for our officers, they opened up the contract, which they didn't have to. You know, and I think we bridged it up with 2.5, I think, or it was, yeah, it's with 2.0, right? And that's a big pill to swallow. So, you know, and we were very fortunate enough to partner with that group to get that life, you know, get that multiplier down. So, I mean, it's one of those things where I remember the days back in 2008 when the housing crisis said, you guys, they get raises for years and oh, you work for the city, you should be fine, you know. But, you know, talking with Heather and Ben Lattin, I met with her about your contract, you know, we, you know, about the healthcare, we changed that four years ago. And now they're paying more for that too. So, you know, for the families. So again, I'm not one to just spend money to spend money, but this is something where you take care of your people and to, you know, make sure we can retain the quality of department head of the non-union staff. So I don't see a problem with any of that, to be honest. So I'm okay with it. As long as they are.
The differences are huge once you see the comparisons. I mean, not huge, but it's so needed to step up and do something because you lose people to the market. And it's, I've seen in academia for 50 years almost, done three really in-depth studies like that at Siena, and it's important. We lose our best because they go. And we don't attract the best.
But, can I add just a few things? Obviously, from where I said, I've long suspected that that gap has narrowed quite a bit. And then when we went to this, through this exercise, it kind of blew me away how far behind we are. And I, for one, you know, in the industry that I'm in, water and wastewater, I go to an administrator conference every year. Two years ago, I may be exaggerating these numbers a little bit, but it was 30% of that workforce is eligible to retire within five years. We're all going to be competing for the same people to go to the house. And I've got two superintendents that are going to retire before I, I have to replace them. These are not people that you can pluck off the street. They have to be licensed, they have to know. You know, technically, I can go run any wastewater treatment plant in the state of Michigan on paper. Doesn't mean I can do it, you know, you gotta get that. And the goal is to be able to keep people here, you know, recruit them, train them, keep them. I've lost two people to a city within a 30-minute drive. I almost lost a third, you know, I had to get a little creative to get this to stay. And he did, which was great for me, great for us. But we just, I'm tired of losing good employees. The bad employees aren't recruited, you know, so the good ones are. But yeah, when we did this exercise, it was surprising to me how far apart we were.
It's, you know, and Ben said that, you know, it slowed it down, but he still loses officers, but it slowed it down. It stopped bleeding a little bit because he was sent into the academy and then they get trained and off to go to, you know, ITC or wherever else. And that was challenging for us because we need to, again, retain all of our good staff, you know, so it's a competitive world out there, especially in, you know, professionals that have degrees, have options, right? I mean, options are everything. And, and I always say I have an associate degree and I'm a bachelor, but, you know, if I had a bad, I always keep my options open. I just would, you know, so this will help stop at least as much look on the outside.
Well, we're geographically challenged.
Yeah, we are.
We pull, and the higher up we go in terms of the positions we're hiring for, we're really trying to get people relocated. You know, if you're in the bottom 50% of comparable communities.
I did, you know, you went through the slide pretty fast. You say comparable communities. A lot of them were quite a bit higher in population than Adrian. I understand that it's difficult to get comparable results for everyone, but the whole first column, they were, from what I can tell, was 50 to 100,000 populations.
Some of them were, but I don't think everything in that column really was.
And I'm just saying that. I have no problem with with what you recommended. I really don't, as long as we can afford it because it is seeing a coworker, keeping and attracting and retaining employees is so hard.
So just looking at building official, for example, above us under our population, we're Alaso, Post Point Woods, Urdale, Monroe, also our population, Auburn Hills, Dunton, Shoretown Township, Rochester, Alpena, awesome. Those are all small.
And some of those places have hired hospital living, like Claussen, you can't buy a house there.
Well, so I know very much about Claussen, as you might know. You know, I mean, it's going up, but they're, Claussen actually has really, really tiny houses, which is kind of a challenge that Claussen has. And it is very affordable for that area. But more particularly, it's like, I worked in that office once a week with building official for several years. He had not much to do. He wasn't working very hard every day, you know, and we got a guy who's both doing inspections and doing his land reviews and that. You know, it's always difficult to, you know, because no two positions are alike.
Exactly.
All you can hope is just, in general, to be very competitive with those that you're competing against.
Well, I don't, I don't have any issues with the recommendation and implementing that. Yes, I don't like to see where we're 34th out of 40 or like that. I'd like to see us be in the top 50%. We don't need to be number one by any stretch of the definition. But if we could move ourselves in the top 50%, you know, I would like to see us be able to do that. I don't know if you've taken a look at what this adjustment would do. He shows the comparisons as it currently stands. Do we know how that would move us in the rankings if we implemented your recommendation?
No, I don't know if you guys looked. Briefly, I would say in some instances, we might only move up one or two spots on the list, honestly. In other ones, we may move up into the top half. But it's going to be in that, probably that second, third quartile area. I mean, it's not going to move us up into the top 25%, but it's going to be, you know, more in the middle of the ground. When I put this presentation together, as Greg told me to, I didn't, I didn't cherry pick positions, right? I mean, and then I just literally put 50% on this side and 50% on this side. And all the greens were on this side. And I, again, that just kind of blew me away that we were in the bottom half. But to answer your question, I don't know where we put every position.
I guess, like I said, I don't have any objection to the objective, to the recommendation. I think rather than going 10 years at a time, maybe we can take a look at this. We need to, you know, make, you know, give the increases this year. But let's check ourselves, do a, do a check to market, you know, annually or, you know, I But let's check ourselves, do a, do a check to market, you know, annually, or, you know, every couple of years, so that we don't fall back. You know, it really bothered me to look at those years where it was zero percent, you know. I wasn't here then, I don't know that any of us were on the commission at that point in time. And I don't know why there were zero percent increases, I'm sure.
We were in a, essentially a recession during, and there were many, many people who didn't get any kind of, I, I was one of those. I didn't get a raise during any of those years. That's very normal.
Well, yeah, but I, it seemed to me that there were a whole lot of years that we, we wouldn't have been in economic distress. Um, but anyway, then, so my comment is, you know, I, I, I'm good with going forward with the recommendation. But we just need to check ourselves more often than, you know, ten years, you know. If we're looking at two thousand eight to two twenty-one, or twenty twenty-one, that's a long time to stop and not have stopped and make, made the market comparisons.
Well, the major piece of that is also the bridge down from two and quarter, two percent. That's the, that's the major piece of pie, and we're not, we'll all be gone by then. What's, when we start to see the fruits of that decision, right? So, I mean, so it's, what was the number, like, total, total save, like, some, how many millions? I mean, like, you know, of course, of it, it, it increased our liability, you know, I don't feel like, like, two percent, which is, I mean, it seems like a lot. Fun when it comes to over twenty million dollar liability. So, that's, that's the piece that I like to see, you know, see that, and again, we'll all be gone by then, you know, maybe not Gordon, but I, I'll be gone by then. But that's the piece that was, you know, you have to increase wages if you're going to make them take a pension head. I mean, I mean.
Four point three million, by the way, the other way to look at it is, that's what it's costing.
Right. Right. So, that's the piece that I, that was in the corner, bottom right-hand corner, that's brought my attention. Anytime you bring out a multiplier, like, you know, the, the department heads have to be like, that's my retirement. But, so you have to make it right on the, on, on the back end of that to, to make everybody happy, because we're going to save money, and then, you know, they're going to get a bump, and so on, so.
We tried to pick a balance between those who are not in the defined benefit program, doing something for them. I think it's, this is a good balance.
Well, I like what Gordon was saying, and I think that we should move ahead also. But do, do we want to have a goal to get our people to that fifty percent? Above the fifty percent threshold within a certain number of years? Because like Greg said, location does hurt us some. When you're, when people are looking to switch jobs, you know, we get knocked out a peg just because of our location. So, I think that making sure that our pay scale is attractive. So, I like what Gordon says, so maybe we should have a goal, that, you know, in the next couple of years. We try to make sure that all those positions are at that level.
Is it a two-year?
Yeah, this is a two-year adjustment. Well, in, in two years, we're sort of making up for what didn't happen over ten, fifteen years. And, and that's similar to what we do with firefighters. Preparing discussion with call session. You know, we found that, that it was very, but, and we got that from them. That group did a similar kind of analysis, and it was just very, very telling. We feel like this will get us back right with the world, more or less. But Commissioner Strider's comment, we gotta, we gotta pay attention to where it then puts us.
It would be very easy to just start slipping back.
Meanwhile, the reason is that, that obviously, the non-union group doesn't get to bargain collectively. We don't have an occasion every two to three years where they're coming in, they've got a representation, and they're showing us data. We have to be responsible as departments and have to do that for it.
This is so telling. Is it something as extensive of a work that takes to do this? Can we do this every three years or four years? Can we do the same evaluation every three years? I mean, the glaring information that we have after not seeing it for years. Taking two years to implement our changes, on the third year, maybe doing another book.
Engaging it every three years, is it better to, like, Commissioner Strager said, set a goal across so many years? To maintain an increase to get us up to that, into that fiftieth percentile, I guess? Or is it that we just check every three years and adjust at that time? What, what is best?
I, I think the goal is to be, you know, competitive. We don't necessarily define what competitive is, but like, so, check every three years.
Yeah, we're, we're chasing figures that are fluid. Everybody's moving. Everybody's moving.
Right, and you know, and, and then, and the percentage of wage increase, that's one thing, but, you know, the backend, the big number. Of the multiple millions of dollars we're saving on the pension, so that's, that's what, I mean, we're, this is a good deal for everybody, in my opinion. Because we're going to have less contribution the city has to make down the road. We're going to see a big change in the background of that, so.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else on that, we've got lots more to come here during your pre-meeting. Uh, I'll follow up with our next meeting with corporate resolution. With that, our next topic for pre-meeting is our trash bill. Matt is here to tell you about.
So, we did get our trash bins back a couple of weeks ago. It took us a while to get through all the information. And I, we put it in the, this large document here that was sent out on Friday. I don't know if everyone brought copies or has a copy to look at. I was sitting down on Friday with the.
With my report, these were the two enhancements, my report.
When I looked at it, one of the questions I had, because I was really analyzing this, is, so if there's a dash, is just that they don't offer that? Or they don't want to bid for that? Which, which does that mean?
They did not bid on that item.
So, we would still have to bid that out, no matter, separately even, okay? That's what I was asking.
So, we had four bidders, uh, which is great. Last time I think we did this, we had one. Um, so it's great to have some, uh, competition here. Um, of the four bids, these, the numbers you're seeing here are the first year bids. So, year five, everyone have, has different cost, and actually, you can see the rate changes in table two. Um, so, uh, to start, um, for this instance right here. Stevens and Modern were tied for, uh, year one, um, but over time, it came down to, uh, Modern was lowest in year five. Um, so, table two here kind of just gives you the difference in cost over the next five years. Um, but moving back up to table one, uh, so these are the options that, the, the items that we bid out. Refuge collection, subscription recycling, mandatory recycling, yard waste collection, bulk trash collection. And then the facility dumpsters and downtown trash and recycling. We had one bidder that supplied a bid for everything, and that was Stevens. Um, the other three had competitive prices elsewhere, um, but they did not provide a complete bid. That's not to say we can't go with them. They just didn't offer all of the, uh, items that we were looking for, all the services we were looking for. So, going down to the bottom table, uh, the green and white table down here. These are based off of, uh, the lowest bidder for year one. Um, so, uh, this kind of gives you the, the option to kind of pick and choose what you guys are looking for. And what I'm really looking for here is some direction on what's, uh, what services you guys want. We asked for a six-bag limit, which is what we currently have. Uh, we asked for unlimited, unlimited bags, ninety-five gallon totes, uh, subscription or mandatory recycling. Uh, we asked for the five-day-a-week collection and also the one bulk item collection. Um, but if, if I can get some direction to what it is you guys are exactly looking for. I can, um, kind of give you guys some, uh, estimated cost for what it's going to cost per resident. And as you guys can see at the bottom here, the, the price did go up. So, currently, we're charging thirty dollars a quarter, which is a hundred and twenty dollars a year. Um, and these bolded numbers are down at the bottom is what the proposed costs are going to be with these generic options.
So, uh, Matt, one question I have on the year, on the year one bids here for Stevens. Um, it's bulk trash collection, that's just per ton, it's two hundred and fifty, so only two hundred and fifty dollars?
Two hundred and fifty dollars per ton, which is what we were charged last year as well.
I know, so did you figure out how many tons it's going to be, and that was added into that bid, or just, you know, so is that going to be on top of that, is what I?
It's going to be on top of that.
What I thought.
Yes, but I took that into account at the bottom. These bolded numbers have that into account.
Okay, thank you.
And again, it's just an estimate, because I can't, I can't determine how much tonnage there's going to be each year. But just taking an average of what we've been using the last five years.
I don't know if this is the time to, to bring it up or not, but I personally like option five. But only doing the bulk collection every other year.
I have a question about the mandatory recycling.
So, we would, um, everyone would have the, uh, a tote to recycle. If they chose to recycle or not, they still have the tote and the option to do it. Um, they're paying for it in their trash bill, it's kind of a way to encourage residents to recycle, in a sense. Um, right now, we currently have, um, about ten percent of the people recycling in the community. Um, in our survey that we put out, we had sixty-six percent of the people said it was important. So, if you kind of give them the encouragement to recycle, it might, it might, uh, boost our recycling a little bit more in the community.
I mean, the other side of that is that it's administratively difficult to have only ten percent of the people participate in recycling.
Yeah, sure, so each year, we send out letters to all this subscribers, um, which they fill out the form, they send it in. Um, the ladies downstairs are taking checks and cashing every day. Um, and we are generating spreadsheets to send to the contractor. And it's like, like Greg said, it's the administrative nightmare, it's just kind of a whole bunch of headaches and unnecessary work.
So, whether you want to recycle or not, you're getting a bid, is all it really means. And so for option five, we'd have two big bins.
You'd have a recycling bin and a trash bin.
There's, it's kind of important to have the, if you have the one bin, to have both. Because, you know, I can just see what's going to happen if you have one bin and, you know.
Blight, that's a good service, but we all know for a fact that there's a lot of trash coming in from the townships. They're sending it up on our curbs, and we're paying for it. Yeah, the problem is you can't really, you know, we can't, we can't quantify that. And I.
We can't quantify it, but we know it's.
Well, we know it's happening, I don't know whether it's half of what we get, but, um. I wish the landfill would reopen. Uh, you know, that, that would help us tremendously. But even with the bulk trash pickups, you might realize that, you know, there's some people that are just too lazy to, to put it out anyway. It stays on their front porch, or, you know, which is a whole nother issue that we've got to, we've got to address. But, um, at this point right now, I'd like to see it annually. And, uh, you know, it doesn't have to be twice, obviously, not twice a year, but, you know, I just, I just think we're, you know, it's going to be a good benefit to the city. And the citizens. And maybe, if my assumptions are right, over the years, people will have gotten, in their early years of doing it, will get rid of the majority of their stuff. And that, there'll just be stuff that accumulated over the next year, a mattress here, you know, that kind of stuff. Anyway, that's, that's my two cents.
Speaking, speaking of the landfill, there is sort of an interim, uh, option, which is to have a place at the compost center. A, a big dumpster at the compost center where people can, in that, uh, off-year, bring their, bring their trash. Bring their bulk items. What was the cost of that, Matt?
Ten thousand four hundred for the season.
Is there a fee to people that bring trash there?
That would be included into the, uh, trash bill. Um, for outside residents, it would be a hundred dollars to get the permit, and we couldn't charge a fee if you wanted it. Be something we could bring to the commission.
Because that way you control if it's city residents or not.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Because I know Madison Township does something similar to that, and they, that's how they control if it's their township residents that are doing it or not. So, they, they have you bring it to a spot. Sorry.
No, I was cutting you off. So, if we did that, and for, they would, as it was filled up, they would put a new bin out there, is that they, you don't get one bin for a year?
No, I don't think so, that's not the deal right now.
Uh, it would be running from May to December.
May to December.
Which is our compost site.
So, they empty the van as many times as it needs to be emptied of.
Yeah, and I think it's, uh, it's actually once a week.
And what do we pay for compost right now, your city?
No, it's included in your city investment.
Well, just, you know, from information Matt sent me, we, so two thousand fifteen, we can, we disposed of a little under two thousand tons of stuff. Um, with the price tag, you know, not counting, if you were to go forward this year, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars taxpayer money for this. Um, and, and, and again, I, I think it's, you know, we're on our blight remediation, uh, plans and all that, but it's, it's a big price tag. Now, I had a gal message me on Facebook last year, asking if we were going to do it, I think we just started talking about it. And, and I didn't know yet if we were all going to support it or not, and I told her, we got a bid, and she asked me again this year. Did you just have a bunch of trash, you just compiled over the course of a year? It's, it's, so people like the idea of dragging to the curb, but that number scares me last year. Six hundred and forty-four tons with a hundred and sixty thousand, now it's a lot of money. A lot of money.
And there were, uh, on the last, so we did it fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Yeah, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, and twenty-one.
Okay, say it again, please.
Fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, and twenty-one. Fifteen, sixteen, eighteen and twenty-one. Like sixteen, there was three hundred and forty-three tons, and then it jumped up to four hundred and seventy-six tons, and then twenty-one, six hundred and forty-four tons.
So instead of going down, it's the one the other way.
Right.
There was a three-year gap.
There was a gap.
For sure, how would you, since you're ahead of the game with having a trash tote, would you tell me how many bags you fit in your trash?
We have, we have five people live out. We, we have a lot of trash. I mean, could be cooked a lot and stuff, so I mean, it it'll fit probably seven, eight bags. I mean, I mean, somebody like you said, like, like, like your neighbor, like, there's different size totes you can get, too. You don't have to get ninety gallons, right?
Yeah, you'd have to get the ninety.
Okay. But they have wheels, it's really easy to drag out there. It's not hard at all. Even if you put one or two bags there.
We've had a recycling.
Yeah, same thing.
Yeah, so, you know, and it's always full long before the trash bins fill up. Well, I mean, it's just, it's just the two of us.
Two apartments at my house, do I have to free tote? Or if we think we can do it all in one tote?
You'd get two separate totes.
I have two apartments plus my house.
Three units. We have three units?
Yeah.
Then we reset it.
So six totes would end up in the house.
So, yeah.
So that's, that's three units. So we're, I mean, there's going to be
I don't know.
Well, that's just it, that aren't going to have the ability to have them.
There are some cities that supposedly have, they have totes. You don't do totes and bags. You either do bags or you do the totes, or you don't do totes and bags. If you're not too much, it doesn't fit in your tote. You don't put bags out with the same tote. We can do both, right?
Exactly, you can do. Currently, but if we had, if we had a trash tote and a recycling tote, all it's going to get picked up is those things that are in the totes. We won't have
No bags.
A total of six bags. It's going to be my tote. And you can get, you can easily get more than six, I, I just from my experience, I know that. But how often are we going to stick to every other week recycling or will they
Be every other week.
I don't know how, like, that's your house. I can't imagine six totes beside my house, you know?
I can't find better standings. I can't see where two is going to park.
I have to, I have a log or something around me. I did.
I've got it picked up in the alley. Right, send them out there so all the neighbors can put their stuff in. That's a good idea.
Mosh, yeah, everybody will have.
You get a tote, you get a tote.
I get six.
Doug gets three.
I get six. So, uh, that's funny. Yeah, that's funny.
I'm sure there's, you're not alone where there are. We have a high rental population, so the those owners are going to have to figure out where all these totes are going to go. We don't want them on front porches. You know, rental property has four units. We don't want four totes on our porch.
Or eight totes.
That would be
Eight totes, right. That would be not good.
Sir, any, any flexibility with the size of the tote, if it's a multi uh building, would they supply a smaller tote?
I believe it was a I believe it was a different price, but it wasn't.
Recycling is three an hour.
The same size.
So why, why are you looking that up? So I was doing the math just now. So if you were to go with option five, you're looking at per unit, because you would have a tote at every single, so if you had, let's use Commissioner Miller's scenario. That you have a three in it, you're looking at twenty dollars and forty-two cents per unit a month that you're paying on a trash bill. And currently, isn't it like thirty dollars a month if you don't have reci, I mean, every three months if you don't have recycling? So now you're looking at, in three months, you're looking at sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents per unit every three months. I'm doing that correctly, I think, right?
Admin costs as well, yes.
Yes.
Our trash is going up.
It's going to go, that's why I was doing the math. That's why I was figuring that out.
It's double the cost.
Yeah, it's double.
It's over double.
It's a little over double. That's why I was adding that up because
You made it sixty, sixty-seven instead of thirty?
Yes. Yes, and 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 this is the thing, you know, we're, we're already concerned. So it's just something to think about. I'm not saying I'm anti this. I'm just saying that my concern is we already have an issue with really high rents for our, for our, our citizens and and that's partly because there's just not, there's way more demand than there is supply of, of rental units, but how is that going to translate? I know how that's going to translate to most landlords is they're going to put that cost now added on to, to your rent, your monthly rent, because how are they going to absorb? Because, you know, that's, that's quite a steep increase.
Well, I think, I mean, I think rents are a function of the market. You know, and you can't just add on because your costs go up necessarily unless the market is reflecting that. I was talking to Commissioner Castleberry. About the effect that our section eight rents have on the market. More than, and I, for a long time, I struggled to understand why rents are so high. Because property values are relatively low, but it's, that's, that's the first explanation I heard that made sense. Is that we're, and our, it swept in in our market study for a section eight run. So as a result, people who want to run to section eight can get pretty high rents for doing so. And that kind of sets the market. Because if it were based on property values, it shouldn't be as high as, as they're really are. So I don't know, and and I learned today registering my first, although you, you have to, the owner gets the trash bill no matter what, even if you want to try to get it built in the tenant, get it. Owners get in the trash bill.
So, uh, we would be hoping to put this as a, on the taxes as one time and cost on the taxes. The first year would be a bill by itself, just to give us the chance to get all the data correct in the system. And then, so next year it would be added to the taxes, on the summer tax.
We build on, but but that mapping is build on the tax, so we get out of something. We've talked before about the ten thousand dollars a year we spend on postage, just sending out a separate bill. It would be a line item on the tax bill. It's not a tax. It is just billed for convenience on the summer tax.
Thirty dollars.
And that cost. The thirty, it wouldn't be thirty dollars. It'd be the two.
Because we get, when we put it on the tax bill, there's only one opportunity to do that. So we have to put the annual out of summer tax.
I mean, I, it, it also is, you know, going to, I don't know how many have the own houses on fixed income, but you know, that's also a little bit, it's not major, but it's a little bit of a hit on, on those that are a fairly large population that is on a fixed income and is being house painted as it is now. So I'd want to, I'd want to be very cognizant of that and very conscious of that as we move forward, if that's what we decided.
And once this is approved, whatever we take, we can start putting the word out there that change is coming. And the change wouldn't take effect until July one of this year. But that bill would be sent out July one as well this year. So we would give them three or so months. And Nathan said that we could even push off the, the interest rate after that point to make it easier, because it is a big bill at once. So they'd have, they'd have at least three months to pay with no interest, even possibly one.
The yard waste collection is done currently by the city.
We've kind of gone back and forth over the last couple of years. Sometimes the contractor does it, sometimes the the city crews do it, just depending on time and, and cost. This is actually a fairly good rate for yard waste collection. And even when the contractor does it, the city usually texts on another week or two, just to provide a good service. A better, more complete service.
Do they take the yard waste to our?
To our dump site, yes.
And the bulk collection pickup, that's an added fee, right? Per year or every other year, however we do it?
Yes.
Based on tonnage, right?
Yeah.
But you have averaged that and
That's averages down in the bottom cost.
Okay.
So that option five, that two forty-five is pretty close to what it, what their average bill would be.
But if we did it every other year, that number would be more like two twenty.
It's a, it's about a fifteen dollar savings.
And that's not getting, that's, that's also not getting a hit from just having, providing the trash contract service and getting a bill for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars either. That's taking that away too. So, yeah, yeah, I take that into consideration for the five years also too.
I mean, I do look the option when it comes to bulk trash is, you know, having that option that every other year, you know, I don't know, maybe you do that every other year where you have that dumpster down at the compost site and, you know, and you have that or, and then you go through and do the bulk trash pickup. And the, you know, and maybe you determine even year is going to be this, odd year is going to be that. Everybody knows that schedule. They get used to that. Because you have some that are not going to have access to a truck or to a trailer or whatever it may be that, you know, a big couch doesn't fit in there in their car, or maybe they don't have a vehicle, where they're going to really need that curb side, but they're just going to know that that's going to be every odd year or every even year. And then the opposite, you know, they can plan if they can find somebody that doesn't have a car or, you know, a truck or something, or maybe they just wait and wait it out for that year. But I do like the option of having it where you can take, because I think that will help alleviate so much at that bulk trash pickup every other year, if that's what we do, if, if we do have that option at least. I think that helps that a lot.
Will the, will the homeowners still have the option of putting a mattress on the curb and calling Stevens and eighty-four to pay their
Yes, so that, that cost is ten dollars. There I go.
It's going to ten dollars.
If, if Stevens is selected.
And that would be, that bulk pickup would be designated time of a certain week, a certain week of the year.
The bulk collection period? Yeah, it's designated for two weekends a year. North side would be one weekend and outside would be another weekend.
So if we keep what we have now, the six bag limit and subscription recycling. That's a hundred and seventy-one dollars.
So, so yeah, option two, the six bag limit with the subscription recycling.
Right.
That includes yard waste and bulk collection. So the average resident would be paying a hundred and seventy-one dollars. If you do
For you.
Yes, if you add recycling into it, then you're also paying that fifty-five.
Right, so even if we do the mandatory recycling, so everyone get it, it's only going up.
It's actually cheaper to do the mandatory. Oh, sorry, I thought you were referring to option one.
No, no, no. So what? How much is it right now for, for us to have the recycling?
Thirty, thirty-one eighty a year.
So we're paying a hundred and fifty a year if we have the recycling?
Yeah.
So the costs are just not that much different. Am I, I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding. I guess where, where you're getting option five is sixty to seventy dollars more per month.
Not per month, per, per cycle. So if you don't have subscription per quarter, because right now that's how it's billed.
Okay.
And if you don't have, and if you don't have recycling, I was going off just your basic trash bill right now without subscription recycling. And it was every, and they pay them in quarters right now.
Yes. I wrote per month. I don't understand these numbers then. Okay.
What are we presently have right now? Like option two?
Uh, you're more like option two.
So I looked at option, I looked at option six. If you did the subscription recycling, but you still have the tote instead of the bags out. It looks to me like it's about six dollars and twenty-five cents a month difference. That's the only difference up from what it is right now. If I did my math correctly. He stopped that one ninety-five number. It looks like that would be the increase per month. But I did one ninety-five. Did one ninety-five take away one twenty, which if that's, because that'd be subscribed, so that's subscription recycling, sorry, I can't talk. Subscription recycling. So if you don't do it currently, right now, and you went with option six, where you don't do it, that
Eighteen seventy-five a month or a quarter more.
Yeah, that's it. Yes.
Yeah.
That's not, you know, drastic. And then you're getting the totes out there. It's just a thought on, on maybe not such a huge hit is looking at possibly, you know, we still get the totes out there now. So now we really, you know, now we are getting those bags off that aren't getting ripped apart like mine just did recently. And, you know, and you're, and you're doing that, but maybe it's still an option on the recycling. You know, a lot do it and maybe more will do it, especially because it seems like it's consistently closed all the time at the county recycling center recently. But, um, you know, if, that would be an option. And if they don't choose that, it's not, boy, it's not such a huge hit. Just a thought.
The only difference is they're just taking away the mandatory recycling.
Yes, yes.
With it as an option, right?
But at least gets the totes out there because we did get a response that, you know, quite a few were in favor of that. And, and I do agree. You know, I, I'm always like, oh, are people coming to town on Tuesday? Because, you know, with all the bags out there and, and but even like, especially when it hits summer, the animals getting into it, like, I can't take my trash out to almost right before the, they show up because animals always are trying to get into our trash bags. It's not something I can even put out right away in the morning. I kind of listen for the trash.
So with that option, Doug would have three bins, possibly a recycling bin if he chose.
Yes.
Yes.
Work. Yes.
Yeah, for me, I, and I'm being quite selfish when I, when I say yes. I, I like the idea of people of being interested in recycling. I really would like to see us recycle. But I think maybe what we can do is possibly look at this and see subscription only the first time, to see what kind of numbers we can get.
Well, I mean, that, that is where we are right now. We get ten percent.
And ten percent.
And, and we, you know, we go through all kinds of machinations to get bills out to those and keep track of those ten percent. Whereas sixty-six percent of the people in the survey said they would do, that, that it was important to them to have curbside recycling.
Yeah.
You know, it's just not important enough that they want to pay for it, but they don't have to.
I see.
You know, is the point. You know, if, if, and the, the other part of that is, if you now go to a bin and you've got only one bin and you're not recycling, then everything that was going to go in the recycling bin is going in the trash bin more than likely, or very possibly. You know, and you're going to end up filling up your trash bin very quickly if you're not recycling anything. You know, I, I mean, my opinion is in the year twenty twenty-two, if, if we don't have everybody with the option to recycle, that's kind of
We're one of the worst states in the Union. We're forty-sixth in the state for recycling. State of Michigan.
Well, you know, and like I said, we, we've already been talking about, you know, the subscription for the, for the recycling, because we've always used the county one. And it's been closed so much, we literally, our recycling's got out of control in our garage because we recycle everything as much as possible. But it's literally out of control because we have no place to put it now. So we were already talking ourselves about getting a recycling joke because it's just it, it hasn't been open enough and, and our recycling is getting out of hand now.
And you're highly motivated to do it, right? And so the average person who's, you know, you know, if it's right here, I'll do it, but
Oh, I definitely feel it, yeah.
I just wonder how many people know how to, what those bins are for, that they are recycling bins and not trash bins. And how to get one, because we've had the recycling bin, no, ten years. It's been a long, long time. And, um, to my knowledge, I have not seen anything from the city come out that says, hey, don't forget, you know, those of you who don't have one of these bins, here's how to get one. So you don't have to go to the county. I just wonder if it's more of a education kind of thing, where we need to let people know that these are available and how to get one. And I know you, you haven't lived here terribly long, but, um, if it's been sent out in our bills, anything, I apologize, I missed it. But I always look at those bins, like down my street, I don't know which ones are recycling, which ones are trash. They have different bins. I thought mine is green on the top, which I, you know, assume signifies a recycling bin. There are others that are.
What's strange is, oh, like all my, I have several neighbors that have recently moved into Adrian, like the city of Adrian, and they had not lived here. And they all knew how to get recycling, but it seems like the ones that have lived here for a long time don't necessarily know. That's what's odd. So I'm not sure how the ones that are moving into the community find out. Yes. So the majority of all of my neighbors that have moved within the last like three years into the city, and they all came from outside of the city, all have recycling.
If you drive to Hannover, you go through Thompson and Celine, they have two, two color bins. They've been doing it for years.
Uh, Dan Slough, the company actually contributes something from the general fund toward their trash contract in order to have mandatory recycling.
I thought they chose not to have a mandatory into company. But it's not mandatory. Because we were so upset that they didn't want to.
Well, I think that's why, maybe why they kicked it. I don't like, no way, call me.
So essentially we're just going over option five, route to six essentially correctly. And it's a, it's a five dollars, five dollar dip or yeah, five dollar difference essentially, right?
Yeah, so if you do the, uh, subscription based and you're a recycler, then you're going to be paying five dollars more than you would be if it was mandatory recycling.
That and how often?
Right. I, I, I agree with that. I like to see every other year and all that's, there's some difference of opinions here. I think that's a, I mean, last year we spent more on bulk cleanup than a splash pad. Well, that, that, that puts it in perspective, everybody.
You know, I, I like it every year, but if we're going to have a dumpster out at the compost site, that, that makes a difference. And that way we also know that we have got people from the township coming in and going rough, because you're going to have to pass to get into compost.
I had somebody at my door store literally tell me to my face, two, one was a landscape, or both of mine. Oh, we got, we got two, we just, we bring all of our stuff. Just, we know when the weekend is, we come in and, and we got our trailers and we line it up. You know, I'm like.
That's true.
And unfortunately, there really is nothing. And even with the compost site, which I love the idea of a dumpster out there. If my neighbor or if someone has a truck that they know, and they go out to Raisin Township and picks up that couch. They, and they're doing a favor for their buddy. They've still got a city Adrian sticker, so it still can happen. Hopefully it won't happen as often, and it's, people understand how much it trash costs. That, okay, yeah, your taxes are more in Adrian because of this. And we have these services. And if you allow non-city residents to use our services like this, your taxes are going to continually go up.
Because when we didn't bid the contract out last time, Matt cut it from wrong, there was no rate increase at all to the citizen, correct? Okay, so the citizens have to understand that the cost to do business is going up. That's, we, we haven't touched it in five years. They, they paid the same five years. And that's not, it's not reasonable or not. It's labor's up, gas is up. I mean, to fix things up, I mean, so all these numbers is not surprising, because the cost, everybody's business has gone up, you know, cost of goods sold gone up. So you know, we have to do a good job explaining to citizens, like, you know, why we went this route, what's our plan, but, um, the numbers don't, don't, don't surprise me, because, but they have not seen a rate increase since.
It's been since seven years.
Seven years. I mean, that's, and that's unheard of in any industry, any, you know.
Yeah, name another industry.
I do want to mention, I, I was talking to some friends and coworkers, uh, that live outside the city, and they pay two hundred and forty dollars annually just for trash collection. That doesn't include yard waste, doesn't include bulk, it's just trash.
And we get the benefit, cause we have, we have five thousand homes, you know, here, plus homes, so we have, we have we have a lot in a small area, so that we could get a better deal. But, you know, look around, like, like you said, prices are high outside of the townships to have these kind of services, so.
How long's the contract for?
This is for five years with the, uh, option for extended.
These are fixed prices for that five-year period, or is there?
Uh, this is the average of the, of the five, yeah.
So what, what, what's our plan for tonight?
No, what's on your agenda tonight is bulk trash collection for this spring.
For this year.
This will be on your agenda, hopefully next meeting, if, uh.
If, if you choose your options.
Yeah, so do we have time to get a dumpster this summer?
This would take place starting July one.
So we wouldn't be able to get a dumpster until July one this year if we want.
We could ask for rates if we wanted to. We have current rates right now. I just don't know.
Do you think that would be cheaper than getting, doing a bulk trash pickup? Since we did bulk trash pickup last year, would it be more reasonable to do?
Let's just do that.
Uh, dumpster this year?
I, I mean, I already, I, I talked to Lad today, and if I told Lad that I'm not going to support the spring bulk cleanup, just because we did it last year. That's the only reason. I love the idea. I think it does a lot of good, but I can't wrap my head around spending more last year on the bulk cleanup than we did on Splashpad. That just, this doesn't sit with me. We're not getting, in my opinion, we're not getting a return for that investment of six-figure dollar amount.
I have a feeling if we have a dumpster out there, that might set uh, the idea in people's minds and start to understand how that works. If we do an odd and even year, or we do every year from now on, or there's lots of things that can happen once they understand how that works. I think that's a great idea.
How many months, how you, the, the, the capo sites open May.
May to December.
Your December?
The, these are the first Saturday and September, first December.
So we've got basically
Seven months.
Seven out of twelve, okay, there's five months that we won't come. Or they, they won't be able to access the dumpster. It's the winter months, but people don't want to do it anyway. Right, I understand.
But you wanted to accomplish tonight, direction on options, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so we can bring back.
So I think, I think we're all stuck at the mandatory recycling subscriptions. That's pretty much it. I recycle now, so I don't really care.
But I know that's the only fear I have. I, I like five, I'm just like, after you said that, I'm like, oh, that's true. There's a lot of places that might be like that with.
But they don't have, we have to figure out a way where places like that don't have to keep all the totes.
They could turn their bin back in.
Right.
See, my, I, I have two apartments by house. That's why I'm talking about this.
Right.
I have a single guy and a single guy, both college students, always gone. I'll go back to my curb tonight. There'll be my bag of trash, one bag, and there'll be one other bag that'll show up, and maybe two. That's it. I never had more than three or four bags ever in my whole time I ever had those guys, and I always have students living in my house. So I wouldn't use, I would never use, but I would like recycling. I think that'd be great.
Well, so you're entitled to six totes, but you can have six or fewer.
I'll still pay for six, but I'll turn back four.
You'll still pay for it, but you'll just.
I have, I have my duplex on Mackenzie. I, I bought them both totes, but now I'll, I'll evaluate, once I see how much recycling, if we do go with that option, how much and I may send them back.
I don't like the idea of mandatory recycling, but I think we only do subscription recycling. We're not going to get any more people recycling yet today. Right. Yeah, so if we really want to make a difference, we're going to have to go with mandatory. And that doesn't even mean that people will use it.
That's just it. It, we, we're calling it mandatory, and it's not really mandatory recycling. Right, it's, as Matt said, you know, they have a recycling bin, but they can turn it back in the next day and never see it again. If they don't want to use it.
But like Greg said, everybody sharing in the cost of recycling.
Right.
Like Greg said, that if you don't have a recycling, if you have a nice, you know, tote, and if you don't recycle, then you're gonna, you're gonna fill that bad boy up quickly. You know, you as well.
So it's incentive to have both. Pay for it anyways, if this is the route we go.
But the citizens have to understand that we're not, this is not what we're going to take the most, this is what we've been paying for the last three or four years is anomaly that it's not realistic.
Yeah.
You know, the big picture of doing this, so.
I think you're absolutely right. I think we need to have mandatory, and that way we need to move people sometimes pulling them into the twenty-first century where we need to be recycling.
I think if we want people to reduce that bulk trash, we have to imply that we're moving toward a communities recycling, reducing our trash.
So we're settling on option five, is that?
Option five, and we're going to switch off bulk collection, dumpster one year on the curb side.
We're not going to have a dumpster if that works. I just shouldn't have it out there every, all the time.
I agree.
And we can keep track of how much we can utilize shelter.
And look at the money we'd save. Let's see the first year.
Yeah.
Hey, the, the number he sent me was, was staggering this morning. I, I, I was, I mean, I, I know we've done it, and I think we stopped the former mayor once, cause he wanted to do it every year too. I'm like, whoa, like, let's.
And we can even, if outside.
Mayor's loves bulk cleanup.
That's, so currently it's, it's composting, but, uh, they can utilize the site as much as they want. So if they want to come back each week and keep dumping trash, they'd be able to.
Yeah, we might need to.
Yeah. And, and we can adjust the structure, so every time they come in, it's another twenty dollars or something to cover our costs.
Okay, and, and just to stress again, we really have to over communicate this.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Communicate it, communicate it, communicate it. That, that's whereby my big concern was.
Well, this is a big change, so you know the newspapers are going to do some, the radio is going to do some.
Yep.
We put it on our website, Facebook, put in the water bills, I mean, we get poured out.
Yep.
I think, I think it's important to tell the history. I mean, that's a true anomaly, that to think that you went six or seven years, no change in cost. And this is a little bit of a jump, come on.
The other thing we need to do is educate the, the citizens as to what's recyclable and what's not. Because my concern is you get, they have eight bags of garbage one day, you have, part of it's going to, all of it's going to go in the trash, except what won't fit, and I'll throw that into the recycling. That's a very good point, because I was at a restaurant one morning, and a guy said, you'll never see me recycling, because I'm not going to tear the labels off the soup cans. I don't want to get into somebody else's conversation, but I had to jump into that.
Yeah.
He, I don't think, he didn't, he didn't understand what, how to recycle it more.
But the city's going to be cleaner, there's going to be less, like, you know, the mayor can take your trash out at four o'clock, you know, when she's allowed to, and, and it's just, you know, no animals, she lives, she lives in a wooded area, they, I mean, I'm telling you, it's crazy. And it's, it's. It's also one of our blunt meetings, I think that's one of the things that some of us, a tote where they live, so not just a tote, too, so.
Well, and for getting some hot waters, probably shouldn't be saying this, but I'm going to, because it's one of the things I've talked about before. It might cut down on the stray cat population. That has been an issue for so long on my street, and the cats feed off of the garbage that gets put out there.
No doubt. And you're right, by Ballenberger, so like, kind of in that area, like, cause I remember, nothing, we had issues with some of the citizens that live over there too, with the stray cat, there was a house feeding them and whatnot, and, yeah, we don't want to bring that in. I give this a hint.
Right.
Right.
Well, we better, we can just move on.
Option five, right?
So the next meeting, I'll present with you guys a, a resolution for option five.
And when would that possibly go into effect as well?
July first.
All right, at this time, we are going to have public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address.
Uh, Ken Tocars, ten, ten Tocars, one ten South Locust. I guess first, uh, the commissioner who came up with the idea of putting a dumpster at, uh, um, the yard waste thing, I think we should pay their taxes next year. Now, let's move on. Last year, I contacted the state of Michigan Attorney General to air my concerns about how the city of Adrian documented public comment. The city of Adrian would dedicate paragraphs and pages in their meeting minutes to document favorable comments, while unfavorable comments listed the person's name with no record of their comments. I contacted the Attorney General, because I was of the opinion that the city of Adrian had set a precedent by documenting favorable comments, and to be fair to the city of Adrian, had an obligation to treat unfavorable comments similarly in their meeting minutes. Several months later, and to date, public comments, both favorable and unfavorable, at the city of Adrian meetings are documented in a similar fashion. I'm bringing this to your attention because, once again, to document that this government body has a clear understanding of what a precedent is and why it is important in government. Common law legal systems place great value on deciding cases according to consistent principled rules, so that similar facts will be yield similar and predictable outcomes. And observance of precedent is the mechanism by which that goal is attained. When it comes to blight, and the city of Adrian has set a precedent of ignoring blight and hoping that it will go away. This precedent was started long before this commission took their seats at the table, and this is what makes this task even more difficult. The city of Adrian set a precedent of not enforcing its ordinances, and based upon this precedent, city residents picked and choose which ordinance they too would follow. We all know that this has to change if we are going to eliminate blight, and I would like to see the city of Adrian set a precedent of enforcing ordinances that are already on the books before adding additional ordinances that will be subjected to the current precedent of random and inconsistent enforcement. We have all heard of the Michigan State Police Click It or Ticket campaign. They simply tell the public that they are going to increase enforcement, and the same principles could apply to blight in the city. A different ordinance for each month. Add a note to everyone's water bill, telling them that you are going to enforce parking on lawns during the month of April. Last year, the city of Adrian set a precedent documenting that the current ordinances on the books do work when this commission declared a marine veteran's home as a public nuisance and condemned his property. The city of Adrian has the tools, the only clear precedent is that you just unite with them consistently. And this is what makes them suspicious of your.
Now, Mayor and Commissioners, Don Taylor, four seven five Meadowbrook Drive. A couple of questions. Is it possible to get a, a copy of the presentation on the non-union employee compensation, uh, presentation today, and also a breakdown of everything that Matt presented on the trash, um, service discussions? And finally, some of you, um, do a great job in the room back there on audio. Some of you start off strong and end up weak, 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 and I'm not the only one that thinks that, so, uh, speak up, everybody, so we can hear you. Especially those of us that are hard of hearing. Thank you.
Can we, can we close those? It's the easiest way of getting that information out publicly.
Mayor Glenn Preston, do I still have time, or are we over?
Go ahead.
All right, I'm speaking on behalf of the President of the Adrian Public Employees Association. Um, I completely agree that the non-union employees need to have their compensation raised. I agree with the, the twelve percent increase, the one thing that I would like to bring to your attention. Um, is that the fourteen employees.
I would like to know who's speaking, who's speaking, what's your address?
Nobody lost.
Oh.
Still there, Glenn?
Glenn, did we lose you?
I'm still here. Glenn Preston, thirty two ninety. Glenn Preston, thirty two ninety Pecan Road, speaking on behalf of the Adrian Public, uh, Employees Association. The only thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is the ten percent of their current salary for, um. Going down from a two point two five to two point oh, TPOM, which includes your utilities, your parks, and your. VPW employees, they took a thousand dollar bonus. Your Adrian Public Employees Association, which includes, uh, employees at the city hall, the police department, public works. Um, wastewater, we took a thousand dollar signing bonus, I just don't think that. While I agree with their, their raises and that they, they deserve them and need them, I just don't take, think that ten percent of their wages are. Equal to what we got, thank you, bye.
Right behind you, Mayor.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You're talking about putting a big tote.
Oh, say what your name and address is.
Talking about putting a big tote out to the compost piles, what you're talking about.
Uh, otherwise, that was a dumpster.
A dumpster.
Uh, one big tote, one even last week. Madison Township does this twice a year out there, they got six of the big ones, and they fill them one day. So if we have. Need more than one. Well, you're gonna have one, and when it's full, they're gonna. Be a day or two later when they change it out. You actually need about four sitting there all the time. You left a little shed there. People coming, fence that area off, people coming in, they're charging ten bucks, bring your stuff in, dump it. Or fifteen dollars, no matter if it's a one dumpster for refrigerators and stoves, one for couches and junk, wood. It's out paid for some of the cost. Now, back to the recycling bin, I'll never use it. I create one box this big in a month, and I take it to a compost, or a recycling, uh, place. It'd be worthless for you to put that in a tote, haul it out to the road, a little box. I don't even want a tote completely. I'm being forced to buy one when I don't want it and don't use, that's not right, which is not in the public. Years ago, our taxes used to pay for garbage pickup. That cost us a thing, other was in our taxes, and. We eliminated it. And the people got mad at us because they had to pay that. Well, now you're gonna force them to pay more and more, and I just don't think it's right. We pay enough in taxes, part of that all be included. We pay it more to the schools and everything else than we do helping the people living here.
Any other public comment?
Oh, I suppose I'll say some, Keen Rabos, four twenty two South Winter Street. I'm generally in favor of the tote idea. Part of my concern is, as we mentioned, some places have considered using some of their funds to help subsidize it for their residents. Either that's something that we should consider with this among other things. And exactly how much you subsidize it, that is worth, but maybe there's even a program for, um. Some people to get assistance. How exactly, but it's definitely something that you could take a look at with your resources.
Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will begin our meeting out there at seven ten, because some of us need, much needed. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for March seventh, two thousand and twenty two. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor He.
Present.
Mr. Hope.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to amend the agenda to strike resolution R twenty two dash zero one three from engineering, which is a resolution to award a bid. For bulk trash collection from the agenda.
So moved.
Support. I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Castleberry, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor He.
Yes.
Motion to strike resolution R twenty two zero one three from engineering from the agenda is approved by an all yes vote.
On the agenda, we have, um, communications, C one finance, there is a revenue and expenditure report for December of two thousand and twenty one. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, I will move on to the consent agenda, may I get a motion to approve and adopt the consent agenda?
So moved, support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Gauss, roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor He.
Yes.
Mr. Hope.
Yes.
Resil, or, motion to approve the consent agenda. A consent agenda approved by an all yes vote.
On the regular agenda. Resolution R twenty two dash zero fourteen is from engineering, it is a resolution to award a bid for major and local street improvements. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Gauss, roll call, please. Oh, it was Strayer, sorry, I'm sorry, thank you. See, we both didn't, I.
I wrote it down right.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Strayer, roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor He.
Yes.
Mr. Hope.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
At this time, it is public comment, just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin in the chambers first, and after all public comment has been heard, we will then open it up for the Zoom participants.
Hello, Keen Rabos, four twenty two South Winter Street, uh, you've heard from me a thousand times, I come with you with a couple of hats today, so. As the chairperson of A three, of course, I'm here to mention that our second Friday is, this is, um. The eleventh, it's coming up here, of course, you can be there in person, you can wash it through Zoom. Or Facebook, that should be working this time just fine. Uh, this will likely be our last indoor only one, so really looking forward to, uh, this spring and summer. And being out there and being to do easily three times as much. And then, I'll just like mentioned, of course, I'll bring this up in the next city commission meeting as well. But, uh, as vice chair of A, the HRC, uh, we are bringing the homeownership seminar that should be on the twenty ninth at six P M. Uh, there should be more information coming out about it sometime this week, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Uh, for all the topics, thank you, that's all for now.
I will now open it up to Zoom participants for public comment. Hearing no public comment, I will now open it up for commissioner comments, Commissioner Roberts.
Yes, I have two things. Oh, sorry, yes, I have two things I'd like to discuss. Um, the first one is that Lenaway Now is having an elements of collaboration event and. On Monday, March twenty first, from five to seven thirty at the Armory. And what it is, is it's a collaboration of all the chemical companies in the city of Adrian, they put together, uh. A group that is, uh, reaching out in different ways to get people more interested in being a part of the chemical industry. And essentially what, uh, what Lenaway Now is going to do that night is explain how this collaboration has. Has occurred, why it has occurred, um, there's a video about it, so if you're interested in going to this, you can contact Lenaway Now. But it is open for other businesses in the area if they would like to, you know, if the food service industry wants to get together and promote. You know, how to become a member of the food service industry altogether, it would be something that Lenaway Now would be able to assist with. So letting you know that, and apologize that I didn't get on the agenda or anything, I just got the information this afternoon. The second thing I have been thinking a lot about, and, um, a year from now, those of us that are on a four year term. Are going to have to think about whether or not we're putting our name in the hat for another four year term. And, um, I have offered this before, and I want to offer it again. That I would love to have people who are interested in being on commission. To shadow a commissioner, to talk to us about what it's like, to, you know, have. Any questions answered, any of that, so if there's anyone out there in the public who is interested in being a commissioner. Please reach out to me because I would love to take this time over the next year to have you see. What is involved and what kind of things you, um, you'll be involved with. So, um, again, I'm offering that, I hope that someone will take me up, or several people are, would take me up on that offer, um, I. I know Commissioner Halt has said a couple of times, just in our pre-meeting, we're not going to be here forever. And, um, I've always said I've run and I've been a part of this because I felt I was needed. I have no intention of being a long-term commissioner, and if there's, uh, someone out there that is, has experience. And I think is someone I would vote for, I will gladly not run against them. So, um, yeah, that's my offer.
I just want to say that's a terrific idea.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts, hearing no more commissioner comments, may I get a motion to adjourn? Support. I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Castleberry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.